Hi, I'm Mario Guerra, former mayor of the great city of Downey. And I'm here with my co-host Eric Pierce, the editor of the Downey Patriot. And we're here today talking Downey with Mario.
And Eric. Mario, we have a lot to talk about today. Every week there's something new happening in Downey. Today, we're going to talk about something that you're very involved with. City Council. Last week, let me just set up the scenario. Last week, the Downey City Council met in a special session. They interviewed candidates for the District Two vacancy. Of course, you were one of the candidates. A little bit of a surprise, the City Council did not choose you. They chose Donald LaPlante. I think viewers of the podcast are probably familiar with Donald LaPlante. Great man, very respected, retired Downey Unified School Board member more than 40 years. And, but I was very vocal in expressing that I thought you were the best person for the job. Alex Dominguez, staff writer for Downey Patriot, he wrote an op-ed expressing that he thought you were the best person for the job. To me, you were the most logical choice. I wasn't supporting you because we're friends and we know each other. You know, my opinion is I thought you were the best person for Downey right now. Obviously, the City Council didn't agree. They thought somebody else was more qualified than you. But first of all, I want to get your opinion. What was it like going through the process and being interviewed? What was that like?
Well, I'll tell you, first of all, I did this for five people in our residence on there. The five former mayors called me up and met with me and asked me to put my head in the ring. Every one of them would have been a fantastic choice. Just none of them live in District Two. I was the only person technically in the city of Downey that can never run again, and that's a former mayor. So I have a track record and a history. My wife asked me to put it in because she's disappointed in aspiring the City Council and the way our city's gone down. So I did put my head in the ring. I thought, okay, short term, I could bring in some experience. And it was constituent services. And I felt that maybe some of the things that I know, especially now in hiring a city manager and city attorney that nobody on this council has ever done before. I thought my experience would be helpful. But so it was interesting because I had so many mixed emotions. I wanted help, and that's why I did it. I'm so glad they didn't pick me from a purely selfish standpoint to put in hundreds of hours on that crazy City Council with all these gadflies and stuff, which I experienced some of that outside waiting for the interviews. So it's a mixed blessing. Donald LaPlante is a good man. I worked with him on the Measure S. I think you'll see that it's a lot different city from school district. It's a lot different hiring a city manager and a city attorney. I think it's a lot different because our school district, thank God, has a great history of non-confrontational things. And it's not because they're so well-run. I think our city hall is totally different. And so I wish him the best, but I hope he helps represent us in District Two, which we need.
Yeah, you know, I'm disappointed that you weren't chosen. It doesn't make sense to me. You know, our city manager's leaving. Our deputy city manager just left. Our assistant city manager is on leave for unknown reasons. Our city attorney is leaving. There's so much turnover right now. What we need is stability and experience. It seems it's too logical, like what am I missing? It's common sense. One thing, regardless of my opinion, what did surprise me at last week's council meeting is that there was a motion, there was an attempt to nominate Patrick Owens, the planning commission chair for the city of Downey to the council seat. That blew me away because you're familiar with Patrick Owens. I'm familiar with him. And I'm going to be honest, he would be terrible as a council member. I feel that he's very political and he's very vindictive. And there's reasons behind me saying that. What was your, did you have a reaction when you saw that they were trying to make him?
I was blown away. Catherine Alvarez and Mario Trujillo were trying to make Patrick Owens. By the way, it seems hypocritical because they're both supposed to be against Ojo's locals. And he was the planning commissioner chair that he voted for Ojo's locals. And that was the first time that I had seen, I was so disappointed in Councilman Trujillo because it was the first time, people always keep talking about him. And I've defended him and so forth. And I've worked with him well for many years on different charity things. But it was high like, oh my gosh, they were right. This really is a dysfunctional council. That two of the council members of the four could actually think that Patrick Owens would be a good choice for this. I mean, so there's a lot of history there, a lot of things that he's done. If you talk to people on the planning commissioner of the city, every decision he's ever made is completely political. So I was really disappointed more than anything else. You know, again, I'm really relieved. My wife sent me a text right after the announcement on the congratulations, you know, because we got our life back and now I don't have to. And I'll tell you a little bit more about the process in a minute. But yeah, I was totally blown away. That it broke my heart more than anything else, I think.
Yeah, you know, somebody mentioned to me the other day that this is the worst City Council Downey has ever had. Now, obviously, I haven't been around, we haven't been around since 1956. So we only go back so far. But it's, there's some truth to it, I think. You know, it's, our City Council right now is very highly polarizing. They're very highly political. And it seems like we see that coming out every single meeting, every single week.
Eric, I'm always very careful. As a former mayor, I like to lead and chair for our team. You know, I've never really put down our city and different things. I'd rather call people directly and so forth. But I'll tell you, by far, in the 40 some odd years plus that I lived in the city of Downey, this is definitely the most dysfunctional City Council I've ever seen. And it's spiraling out of control. There's a lack of leadership when your top five people in the city are leaving at the same time for whatever reason, and there's more to come. That's leadership. Lead our community, help our community. And I just, I'm done. I'm done not covering up, but looking the other way because I want them to do things better. I need to speak out because our city is slowly paper cuts. Paper cuts, paper cuts, lack of leadership, lack of integrity, spiraling out of control. Those things are happening in Downey right now.
You know, and I've heard that the phrase transition used to describe what's happening in Downey. And look, the City Council has every right to transition to new leadership if they want to. That's the City Council's prerogative. But if that's what's happening, this is a really bad way to do it, to get rid of all this institutional knowledge at the same time. That doesn't make any kind of sense.
And Eric, that's one of the things I was disappointed in. That's one of the reasons I really did put my head in the ring because I could bring some institutional knowledge. When Gilbert Levis leaves at the end of June, who else is going to tell them what happened on there? Not, I'm not the only person that can. But from a top leadership, I was in the room, if you will. I was in the closed sessions. I know why we made certain decisions and what we did that on there. And I thought that would be of value to them. And I'm disappointed, but I'm only a phone call away. And I'll tell this right now, Mr. LaPlante can call me. I can tell them all about District Two and certain reasons. Why did we put lines on the middle of Raze? You know, why did we put stop signs on Quill and Raze? By the way, which they want to do this roundabout. By the way, if Mr. LaPlante ever watches this on there, that should be one of your top goals is to stop the roundabout.
On Raze and Quill.
It's just silly. There's somebody's going to get hurt there. The council's already spent $100,000 on designing it. And that all came because Sean Ashton came back from a conference and said, hey, just look at this. So all the rest of the council members said, go do it in your district. So he picks the worst corner in front of Rancho and in front of the Apollo Park with kids, families.
And with zero public input from the community. But that's another part that you're.
That's another one. What we should do when I'm in that corner there and show everybody the thing. But again, things like that, that to me, a council person is constituent services. It's answering the phone calls. They're from our residents, telling them how you can help them. Okay, when they have issues on their block, when they have issues on their street cleaning, when they have issues with public safety. You know, that's what a councilman needs to do on there. So my direction and being able to know how to get help, I thought for a short period of time. By the way, it was interesting. We were outside with several other candidates that had filled in or had put in their request. Good people. I mean, whether you agree with their ideology or not, but they were very good people. The only one that I thought would hurt the city was Patrick Owens. He would hurt the city. And half of our council, Councilman Trujillo and Councilman Alvarez, decided that he should be the best, which blew me away.
The other candidates, I thought, had very true, honest intentions, great residents, and I hope they stay involved in Downey. Because they were doing it for, they were sacrificing their own personal lives for this. So I think they deserve some credit. Mario, you weren't picked. I'm bummed about it. But if it wasn't going to be you, I'm glad it was Donald LaPlante.
And I totally agree with that, Eric. I really do. I think that that, I think that's a safe choice. He's not going to hurt us. He's not going to do any unethical. I hope that he looks to, and he is willing to at least, question is the wrong word, but at least offer different alternatives that they don't promote certain things. There's a team building there on one side in the City Council that is spiraling out of control. You know, we have the Rancho project. And we've heard about no bid contracts down there, building, you know, projects down there in South Downey, which, so I hope that Councilman, you know, LaPlante will be able to at least address that and stick up for the constituents of District Two.
Well, you know, you bring up Rancho. That's always been an issue because it feels like those residents in that district, that neighborhood have always been in the dark. I remember when Rancho, when the county installed the temporary housing for the mentally ill and then some homeless. You know, nobody had a clue. Nobody had a clue that it was, that what was happening until the buildings were going up. And that's irresponsible. There should be no excuse for it.
And then they lied. Councilman Ashton said, oh, I didn't know anything about it. But you can look at the emails from a year earlier. And of course, they do all about it, you know? That's disappointing.
The reason that this vacancy had to be filled, in my opinion, is because the residents in that district deserve a voice on the City Council. Now, it puts Donald LaPlante in a tough situation because residents are going to be coming to him with questions. And he's brand new. He's going to need to go to city staff to get those answers. But city staff is leaving itself. There's no, who is it going to go to? Who's going to be the new city manager come July 1st? We have no idea. It's just a tough situation.
It is a tough, I'm disappointed. I mean, like I said, you know, you don't have to be a council member to help. I'm willing to help in any way, shape or form. I'm a phone call away. I've always have been. And I hope they fix it. This is so important. You know, there's nobody on this council that has zero experience in hiring a city attorney or a city manager. Those are the only two out of the three people that work directly for the City Council. The other one is the city clerk. So everybody else in the city works for either one of those two. And the majority of people work for the city manager. Can't tell you how important it is. So the fact that they were trying to politicize it, like putting Pat Owens in there, says everything. Was everything.
You know, what really bugged me is that there was no comment. There wasn't any defending. I don't know what the thought process was in trying to get Patrick Owens. Like, I don't see the positives in appointing him. And there was no explanation. So that was, that kind of really.
It looked like Mr. Trujillo kept looking down. I think he was almost embarrassed and was trying to get away with something on there. But he made his way, but then again, you're right. There's no, tell me why you think that that's the best person. Hey, I was the second best person according to Mayor Pacheco. Which she finally compromised. I just thought it was hilarious. She goes, oh yeah, so yeah, I think he's okay. You know, former mayor Guerra is the second most qualified person here. Like, I just laughed. It's okay. Anything I say now would sound petty or, you know, like, you know.
Sour grapes.
So I'm trying to limit myself on there. It's just, I'm, the process. By the way, you want to talk about the process?
Yeah, let me say one thing really quick. Is I don't, you know, I'm always afraid. I don't want to be rude and insult council members on a personal level. I never want to do that. But you know, these are public figures. And we're talking about the future of our city of Downey. There's too much at stake for people to be quiet about what's going on and the direction of this city. It's too important. And it's uncomfortable talking and, you know, speaking negatively about people's decisions. Now, we're not talking about them personally, but the decision that they're making, it just makes me scratch my head.
If I was the mayor and/or on that council and the top five people in the city left under my watch, I would be embarrassed and I would find a way to leave. I would get help across the aisle, across from anywhere. I would seek help to try to help turn this around.
Because obviously, something is wrong.
Something's wrong.
People are leaving the city.
Under your leadership.
Under your watch. And you have some responsibility in this.
Eric, did you get any grief? I saw Friday's paper. You had a picture there of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. Did you get any grief from anybody for that photo? Or what are your thoughts behind going into that?
No, I got a couple, I got a couple of comments about that. But because, you know, I wrote an editorial last week about, you know, my thoughts on what's going on in the city. And I used a photo of our mayor, Blanca Pacheco, with our mayor pro tem, Catherine Alvarez. And there were some, I don't want to say any names, but there were some people who weren't, you know, happy that we use that photo because, you know, not everybody wants to be associated, especially with Catherine Alvarez because, you know, she's a subject to recall for criminal history. But she's the mayor pro tem. She was voted mayor pro tem.
By her, by Blanca Pacheco. Blanca Pacheco was the deciding vote on making Catherine Alvarez the mayor pro tem.
Right. That's our leadership, you know, and we share responsibility for that. What was the process like?
It was, first of all, they barely let us know until the end. Okay, the night before, we got an email. And that day, I was like calling city clerk, like, what's going to be the process? So they told us that they had questions. They weren't going to let us see the questions, which is fine. But then we weren't allowed to be inside. Okay, we can only be inside the council chambers. They put us outside. You're looking in at the window, you know, through the window on there. I just thought, I felt like a little kid, okay? I mean, technically, I could have gone to my car or I can watch that on video because it's a public meeting, right?
Could you hear what was happening?
No, you couldn't. You couldn't hear what was happening on there per se. So we're all sitting outside there. I made sure to sit on the other side. I wasn't going to sit next to Patrick Owens. I was talking to Donald LaPlante. I got to know the other lady that was a police officer in Belgrade, nice lady. And a young man, Jeremy, he left early because he didn't know process. He was glad he was the first one because he actually had an appointment somewhere. Anyways, so they tell us then that, and they said, okay, you're going to only come in for the drawing, that you have to be outside with each other person as interviewed. But then after you're interviewed, you have to come back outside. And I said, well, why can't I be inside? Once I'm interviewed, you can't, I can't change my questions. I mean, I'm a grown up. I can sit in the chair quietly.
And it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting! And stuff, no, the mayor said you have to sit outside. So, you know, you're sitting out there, it's a little bit hotter. And you're looking at it and you're watching through this window. And it was just kind of silly. I mean, I literally could have gone outside or I could have sat right there and looked at my phone and listened to it. I wasn't going to do that. I just thought that was, you know, also a little childish. But the process, so anyways. So I was like a little bit perturbed. But you know what? I answered the questions honestly. I think everybody got asked the same question. You know, what are my top three goals for the city? And by the way, my top three goals for the city for a six-month appointment are totally different than where for four years. Okay? Because of course, right now, everybody should be doing everything they can to help when it comes to safety. Okay, that's our number one concern for our residents in our city. Thank God.
Public safety.
Public safety here, okay? Thank God we have, you know, we have the great Downey Police Department and Downey Fire. But then everybody talked about having a relationship with the school district, which is great. We need to have that. But it's six months, folks, and we already have a great relationship with the school district. It's about constituent services. It's three short-term. I was going to do three things, by the way. I was going to make sure that Lance Corporal Josh Widow's name gets put up on the memorial for the Veterans Memorial out in front. He was killed in the line of duty. We brought him back. We built that for Josh Widow. And his name's still not on there and it's been 10 years. And I've written to the council several times, we put his name. Number two, I want us to have a veterans priority list, just like Long Beach did. Okay? And it's easy. We already have, we already have a blueprint on there. And it's prioritize the things, the goals that we need to do for veterans in our city. Not a big deal. It is a big deal, but it's not from a council standpoint. And the third, I want to add John Gately Downey, Governor John Gately Downey and James Stamps on the City of Downey Hall of Fame. Most people don't realize we have a City of Downey Hall of Fame. There's only one person in that Hall of Fame. It's Dr. Mary Stauffer. And it's time that we added some more people. So my goals were not lofty. They were functional. And I was going to be there for constituent services.
I don't know, Mario. I just, I wanted somebody there with common sense. You know, and somebody who would make decisions in the best interest of Downey. I miss those days. I don't think that's asking for too much. You know, but your politics aside and what's best for the city of Downey. And when you make a decision, explain the reasoning behind your decision. Because when you don't, it makes me question what your true motives are. And it's not, it makes me upset because I feel like we're not, we're not getting that anymore.
And Eric, we've always been that way. You know, that we've always been non-political from that standpoint. Sure, you had some personalities or you had certain people. You know, you had Anne Behr didn't hate on my guts on there. She would vote the opposite of why. And thank goodness, it was a 401 council the other way. But there's 482 cities in the state of California. It is illegal to run with a D or an R to be politicizing city and local municipality. And that's one of the reasons why. Because it should not be about a D or an R. Your local government take care of the people. So that's one thing Downey has always done really well. This group seems to have taken it to a weird level.
Yeah, and you know, voting one way and then posting cryptic messages on social media, that's not answering to your residents and the people who voted you in. And, you know, it bugs me with everything, our city, it's in chaos right now. And I see our elected officials at ribbon cuttings and photo ops and having these really silly public events. And when I say silly, I don't mean like anything like business grant openings. I mean, you know, something like a touch a truck event that's happening this weekend. Like, is there, I don't know. But there's, you know, like you said, our city staff is leaving. All this is happening. Like, that's where your focus should be. Comment on it. You know, show some leadership. This is your opportunity to raise that butt. I'm saying that to every single council member. This is your opportunity to step up because there is a void in leadership right now. And Downey's suffering because of it.
I'll tell you, and I'm glad that one council member, Claudia Fermetta, brought it up. The hypocrisy of pushing out Gilbert Levis and then wanting to name a park after him. And she used the right word, hypocrisy. She used it twice in her comments. It's unbelievable to me. Oh yeah, that's going to make it all go, get better because we'll name a park after him after we forced him out, which he had three or four years before retirement. And wow.
That was more about the City Council than it was about Gilbert.
Of course, of course.
And I'm a fan of Gilbert.
Of course.
You know, and I'm not a fan of naming public facilities and schools over public employees anyways. But you're 100% right. That was just inappropriate.
Yeah, it was, I mean, think, Gilbert is too classy and too honorable that he declined it. And I'm glad he did. We didn't, I mean, Jerry Caden did a lot of things, our city manager. And over there, the Downey Landing, the fountain, we haven't plowed there because he helped do that on there. So I hope they do something at the Promenade. It's always, you know, our school board members, you know, they all have buildings named after them on there. And I think it's great. They serve well and so on.
Donald LaPlante has a building.
He has a building on there, but he said something, he didn't want anything on his tombstone. But one of the guys, the comment said something about that. But you know what? These buildings, this is taxpayer money. You know, so would I take, you know, the walking track named after me? Yeah, it'd be an honor because I did those things, but it's not what you do it for. And you don't, you know, for those type of reasons on there. We've named some things. I mean, people like Meredith Perkins, he, a great man. He pushed for that skate park even though it wasn't in our district. So I was honored to name it after him. Dave Gaffin and I worked on the dog park on this, when we named it after him.
Those are reasonable.
So yeah, but not a whole park.
Not a whole park.
Especially after a city manager, and God bless him. I love Gilbert Levis. And he did an amazing job and so forth. But Gilbert Levis is going to get a nice retirement for the rest of his life. He's a young man. And health insurance forever. I mean, that was his job. He did it well. So I don't want to minimize what he did. There's a lot of other city managers in other cities that aren't as good as Gilbert Levis.
Gilbert was very, you know, well compensated as he should have been. But, but you know, he's retiring July 1st. But we have to be very clear, he didn't want to retire. He wanted to stay in Downey a couple more years. But he retired because it was better than the alternative. He was put in this position. And so it's not, let's not pretend like he's not being pushed out because he is.
And we all know that. And, you know, the amazing thing, and I joked to him about it. Unfortunately, back in December, when the news kind of leaked out that they were looking at pushing him out, what the city of Downey, the residents, it was a packed council in a special meeting in the middle of the week, just people to talk about Gilbert Levis. So God bless him. He deserved that. I mean, he deserved that, number one. Number two, I told him, Gilbert, you just got to attend your own funeral. You had all these people, you got to see that on there. And, you know, the terrible joke on there. But it was, I felt good for him that he got to see how much he was loved and the people that he's done good for.
Yeah, so, you know, onward and forward.
Yes.
Good luck to Donald LaPlante.
Of course.
I think he's going to give it his best, his best effort. I am going to give a little shout out. He is going to be a guest on the Downey Patriots Live Wire podcast. He's going to be interviewed by Alex Dominguez. So by the time this airs, it might already be up. We'll post the link.
Make sure you ask him about the roundabout. Tell Alex, we want the roundabout out. The residents have spoken.
Look into it. I'm not going to tell all the vote, but at least look, because a lot of people are upset.
Absolutely. I just tell them in District Two. Nobody in District Two wants it.
Doesn't make sense because there is a retirement center. You have to, like, the little old ladies walk in there. You have students. It doesn't.
You have people in wheelchairs.
And there's no problem, there's stop signs. There's no problem there. But I know we're getting off topic.
I know, we're getting off topic on there. But ask him about it there. Tell Alex Dominguez to ask him about that.
Yes, I'll mention that. I'll mention that. But, you know, Mario, I'm bummed that it wasn't you. But on a personal level, you know, you get out of dealing with all that nonsense. I think you're going to be happier. Your mental health is going to be better.
I am. I am. I got accosted by the gadflies outside there while I was waiting for, where the police had to come. They saw that they were kind of mischievous as they are. There's about four of them. But so I saw that, I'm like, oh my gosh, I don't have to be here for this. And so it's all good.
You can watch the Dodger game.
Well, when the swearing-in, I had joked to Donald LaPlante outside. It's like, I hadn't canceled my tickets. I'd be at the Dodger game while he's getting sworn in. I got the best deal on that. So I'm good with that. I'm thinking my grandson to our seats in the Dodger.
Well, thanks, Mario, for doing that. You tried. You gave it your best effort.
I'll tell you what, I would be disappointed in myself if I hadn't gone through the process or at least applied. Because I know I did everything I could to try to help the city. The fact that they didn't want my help, I'm good with that. I really have no problems with that. But then it wasn't selfish of me to not put my name in, okay? I offered my services. They don't want it. I'm good with that, and I'll continue to help the city in other ways.
You know, that's how I felt running for City Council when I ran in twenty twenty. I did it with honest, good intentions. The voters wanted somebody, they don't want Catherine Alvarez. You got Catherine Alvarez, and that's great. I'm living my life, and I'm so, life goes on. And this is, the voters get what they deserve, whether you like it or not, you know? She has her fans, and that's great. But, no, this isn't the end-all, and you can still do what you want.
Absolutely. And Eric, I'm glad you brought that up, and we're trying to finish our podcast here, but this is really important. Eric, our city spiral is in one election. One election. So you had former mayor Rick Rodriguez, former mayor Alex Saab go off the council, Catherine Alvarez, which is still going to be recalled on there, and you've got council member Mario Trujillo. So you replace those two with these two, and look what's going on with our city. So I'm just telling you, folks, elections matter. This election coming up is going to be important. But now, we have to fix this for the next, this generation now, the leadership we lost in the city. Forget the council. With the city management and not doing a planning and having somebody, the next person up, and doing longevity, it's bad. And it's based on this council, so the next, it's going to take another generation to get it done. But we can. We'll fix this because we're Downey. And folks, stay with it, be open, make sure you listen to the candidates, make sure you see who they are. Make sure you see who supports them on there, and that's really important.
And, you know, thank you for listening because, you know, we've gotten comments from people who say that they know what's going on in Downey in part because of this podcast. And that makes me, that makes me feel good. You know, coming from the Downey Patriot, I love what I do there, what the Patriot does. And this is another outlet to help keep people informed. So you're doing your part by listening and staying engaged.
Absolutely. So we're going to say goodbye. Thank you for listening and watching. We have another podcast coming up shortly. We've got a lot of fun things. We're going to go remotely in the future. We've got a new big corporate sponsor that we're going to announce, somebody in the community, because we love that. So we'll be announcing that shortly, and we'll do another podcast. So thank you for watching Talking Downey with Mario.
And Eric.